Good afternoon. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Biloxi City Council on May 21st, 2024. Being that there is a change to the agenda, do we have a motion to amend the agenda?
To amend.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence. Seconded by Mr. Shoemaker. All in favor? Was that a vote? No? Okay, all against? Alright, so we got three, four, and one against.
Three. Three, four, and one against, correct.
Yes. You got that?
That's it.
Hmm?
No.
He's a no. Correct.
I'm against.
Can you please read those changes, Ms. Carey?
Yes. To the policy agenda, we're removing item 4D, resolution appointing George Burdrow to the Biloxi Housing Authority Board. To the consent agenda, we're adding item 5II, resolution ratifying emergency entry into First Amendment to special event agreement for the COBIA tournament. And to the routine agenda, we're adding a docket in the amount of $683,703.68.
Move the agenda as amended.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Lawrence to move as amended. Seconded by Mr. Shoemaker. Alright, all in favor? Three, four, and one against?
Got it.
Mm-hmm. Okay, this brings us to the presentation agenda. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Appreciate it. Welcome everyone to our meeting, and we have a couple of presentations or our proclamations present. I would ask Cindy to come up, please, first, and let me read this for this great cause. Cindy Lamb, a great friend and a great citizen, on behalf of the City of Biloxi proclamation, whereas the City of Biloxi administration shares a critical concern for patients diagnosed with a brain cancer and a desire to spread awareness of their needs for diagnosis, medical care, healing, research, to find and targeted an effective treatment. Brain cancer affects both women and men in every age, race, religion, culture, and status. The National Cancer Institute estimates that approximately 15,000 people are diagnosed with glioblastoma multiforme each year, GBM, is what it's called, the most lethal form of brain cancer, and with intensive and debilitating treatment regimen. Accurate brain cancer diagnosis is key for access to professional assistance, assist- ............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................. Next, it's a big occasion for the Floridalee, but it says, Kenny, cross this up, and I want to invite everybody up. Everybody from Floridalee, please come up here and join with this as I read this proclamation. It's a big occasion for Floridalee. Ninety years is a long time, right, Kenny?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, around now, see if I can read this thing. This proclamation, on behalf of the City of Biloxi, the Floridalee Society was chartered in 1934 by Acadian French, who began migrating from southeast Louisiana to Biloxi in 1914 and working in the burgeoning seafood industry. Whereas the Floridalee Society was founded as a social organization, has since grown into ladies auxiliary, reflecting its commitment to inclusivity and community spirit. During the Great Depression, a time of significant financial hardship, the society demonstrated remarkable foresight and compassion by investing in a portion of the members' dues to cover funeral expenses for fishing families who could not afford them. The Floridalee Society's clubhouse has served as a vital gathering place for Acadian community, providing a space to socialize, celebrate, you know, they know how to celebrate, and preserve their unique cultural heritage, including French foods, tradition, and language, ensuring that the rich heritage of Acadian French continues to thrive for future generations. Now, therefore, I, Andrew Fofo-Gilich, Mayor of Biloxi, on the occasion of the 90th anniversary, celebrate and honor the Floridalee Society for its enduring legacy and invaluable contributions to the cultural and social fabric of Biloxi, and do hereby proclaim the 25th day of May, 2024, as Floridalee Society 90th anniversary. Congratulations. (applause)
Good job, Mayor. All that was in French. (inaudible).
Congratulations, and have a-
Thank you.
Great occasion. Thank you. And I believe that concludes my report.
Alright. Being no departmental report, we'll move on to council reports. Mr. Lawrence?
Anyway, I got a couple of things. I went to the wooden boat show, it had a great success again. Everything worked out. Them old wooden boats are amazing. Was you out there, Mike? Did you ever go buy a wooden boat? I know you liked the old wooden boats. There was some fine-looking boats out there. But that was a good event for the city. A lot of people came. That was excellent. Next thing, Fofo, I know we've had some comments about the welcome signs. Have we signed somebody up to thought painting them signs, upgrading, upgrading them?
Yes. We've been working and have three bids and going through, whether it's plastic, aluminum, wood, or whatever, we have those bids in our possession, and we'll make that call very shortly, this week.
Yeah, okay, I mean, that's needed to be done pretty. Did we get the sample coming? We need to be ready.
It's a, it'll remind you of, the sign will, you know, look at Biloxi in an arch fashion, like it's on the crosswalk, so you'll see that in this new sign.
Yeah. I just hope you stay on topic and get that done pretty quick.
On my desk.
Yeah.
Right, John, it's on my desk.
Uh, the next thing is kind of something to do with Ward 1 and 2 is the Mercer Cross. I mean, we got to fill that thing up more and more. What is the plan?
Well, as you-
Well, with the authority we have, since that is pretty much owned by the diocese, I know we've got some control.
We're working in conjunction with a number of agencies, Open Doors, Back Bay Mission, and the bishop and the diocese to handle what can be handled, and we're assisting them in making sure that I think the regulations are not violated and doing everything we can to help that actually, the situation out. But it's a problem, and it's going to take a great effort to, you know, put a dent in that problem. It seems to grow, and, you know, bits and pieces that have been successful in relocating and getting some permanent trend, I think the idea is to have a transitional kind of site where it's not going to be permanent for those people, and we're working, you know, with a number of agencies in order to assist them in trying to pull off a mission that is a tough mission.
Yeah, I mean, that, we said it all the time, but 90% of people, they're not transferring or transitioning to anything. And how are you going to get rid of them off that property, live in the tents? I mean, we can't, that's just don't leave. You come off the interstate, obviously there's a bunch of tents over there. I mean, it's something we need to do to clean it up, and the people in that neighborhood, there's so many of these walking back and forth, which is sometimes not a good thing. So, I mean, something needs to be done immediately. You can't sit there and worry about transition and stuff, that ain't going to happen. Back Bay Mission can't move them people off that property.
Well, we've been meeting, and some of the council members have been aware of what we've been doing over the last two months on what can be done and what should be done, and so it's on our radar every day.
Well, I mean, we just need to, you need to come up with a plan, tell them what you're planning on doing, so we need to tell the people that live around there what's going to happen, if we're going to move them, if we're not going to move them, or whatever. But as the people that live in the neighborhood, they're big concerned. I know Felix has heard a lot about that also, so I just, we need an update of that soon as possible.
Good.
Thank you.
That's it.
Mr. Guines?
Okay, thank you, George. I was going to mention that, but I appreciate the update on the Mercer Cross property. I've been getting a lot of complaints, just like George, and I'm glad that we are addressing it. Second of all, Kenny and I had the pleasure of going to Mississippi Gulf Coast Junior College with Dr. Graham and learning about the programs that they have. She let us know that there were a lot of free grant opportunities for education, and we, as a council, need to kind of push that because there's a great job need out there, and we have a lot of great opportunity, grant opportunities, for people to get education and join the workforce. So Kenny will probably expound on that a little bit more. And last, I just want to thank one person, one of our loyal employees, will probably be leaving, and I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Jason Davis for all his work and service here for Biloxi, so thank you for all you've done.
I told him we'll have the goal watch next week when he's here.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, coincidentally, we have a late addition to the agenda on a special event, but I had a question about special events. You know, there's a process, and I know that they follow that there through the police department where the application's made and so forth, and the tiers are determined for these events based on the number of folks that are anticipated to attend. Tier 1 and 2 are the largest ones and so forth. Is it possible, it is possible, could we get a list at the end of each month, for example, our last council meeting in May is next Tuesday, could we get a list of those tier 1, 2, and 3 events that have been approved for June? Because I know the deadline for applying and everything are 30, 60 days out, so we, if you could do that, then if folks ask us about this event or that event, and they're really interested, I think, in those larger ones, 1, 2, and 3, then at least we have that information. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Yeah, I want to echo what Councilman Guines said about Jason Davis. You've worked 25 years in the City of Biloxi. I told him he could do another 10 or 15 easy in Moss Point. So anyway, good job, Jason. Proud of you. Exercise equipment on Penzoil Park? Do we know where we stand on that? I don't see Ms. Bell here. Is there an update on that? Been pushing for that for a while.
We're doing an assessment, we're doing an assessment of every park in an inventory way to see how many pieces, whether it's picnic tables or benches or those kinds of things, and we're in the middle of that process right now and trying to get a plan on what needs, you know, what needs the worst, you know, what needs the most attention in worst conditions, so. But I don't know whether she has anything on order specifically for Penzoil now, but we're in the middle of a giant spreadsheet that's going to put us in a good shape to address what needs to be done.
Be great if the council could, you know, we all have, some have more parks than others, but it'd be great to know what's planned for the parks in each of our wards. Sound system is still spotty here in the council chambers. If it's, we're going on, we're fixing to go on year four.
On the, on the internet you're talking about, not here.
Well, you had to swap out microphones here. I don't know what the problem was, but, but I think sometimes it's here, but also it's associated with the internet and the videos. I still hear that, and it's kind of tough for some folks to follow the discussion. So hopefully we have a plan for that as well. And I know grass, it's grass growing season, and did we have contractors last year that helped out with Public Works? I just know it's going to be, it's going to be a bear for them. Can they manage all the grass cutting, or do we need to consider some contractors to do some of the work?
I think it's always a consideration, especially, you know, when our vacancies pop up and you're shorthanded in the crews. But I think there is adequate to address, at least, you know, through September, get a plan on what the number of crews can be augmented or, you know, replaced with contract crews.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That concludes my comments. Thank you, Ms. President.
Mr. Glavine?
Thank you. I'm going to echo coming out of the chute with my report about the grass cutting, especially along Cedar Lake. It's starting to grow in those ditches pretty rapidly. I mean, in blink of an eye, you see how fast that grass grows, and so I hope if Public Works can't get to these areas immediately on their rotational plan, that we do fill it in with that contracted or professional services or whatever, contract services that we've allocated in the budget for that, for that initiative. Couple of other things I'd like to talk about, like Felix said, we had the opportunity today, we were invited, the whole council actually was invited, but from both cities, and we got to sit in on a presentation by Dr. Mary Graham and Dr. Erin Riggins, and it was really compelling to see these programs, how they link up in the community, how you can get a four-year degree for Mississippi State, from Mississippi State, not even leave Gulf Coast Community College. And all the cyber, not just certifications that they're issuing, they're actually issuing these diplomas in cybersecurity and partnering with Kiesler, and also trying to get the high school students engaged and interested in some of those, you know, degrees, and the work they do is just incredible. Dr. Graham was actually a cheerleader when I was up there playing football a few years ago, so it's amazing to see her leadership, and it's no surprise. Graduation, the mayor and I attended Biloxi's graduation, and there was about 396 students, I believe, that graduated, and the enthusiasm for those young men and women were just incredible. I've had the privilege to be invited by Marcus Boudreau, Superintendent, and Swayze Collier, who's serving as President of the School Board, to be up on that platform and to interact not only with the parents but with those students who are now taking that next step, that giant step in their careers. It was really, really amazing to see. Shout out to Allen Lane for removing some debris quickly. One particular pile was on Spring Lane, and while that was important, it actually came from Sister Joan, and I told him, I said, "Listen, I got to, I got to get this removed, man. I don't want to go to hell." And plus, it was Saturday, and I said, "I want to be able to go to church tomorrow," but he removed it within an hour and was able to get his resources. And there was another pile that was on Redwood. He responded and got that picked up quickly, and that's, that should be, you know, our mindset, is when we have issues around the city and our community, we should kind of see where our resources are, and if we don't have them immediately, we should be able to identify and problem-solve and take care of the needs of our citizens. And I believe that's it. Concludes my report. Thank you.
Mr. Shoemaker?
Yes, just a few things. On May 5th, we had walking in Wool Market history, which I think was the first event in Wool Market like that. Mandy Hornsby, that's a historical administrator for Biloxi, kind of put all that event together. She has some great volunteers. Huge turnout, I think way better than anybody thought it was going to be. Great turnout. She had some great volunteers that helped. It was very informative, so hopefully moving forward in a year or so, maybe we can get some more history behind Wool Market. Have another event. She had other events as well throughout the city. Hopefully, I can make some of them. I know one was in the cemetery in Biloxi and a few other places, but some, some well-put on events by her, so kudos to her. Barges, I know the barge is over by Pops Ferry Bridge, and I don't think we have anything much to do with those barges, but I know they broke loose the other day, a couple of days ago, and luckily. (inaudible). Anyway, I don't know what we can do about that, if anything, but just something I wanted to bring up, I know it's hurricane season coming up. At any time, whether hurricane season or not, that would have hit the bridge. That would have been a huge issue, and I think, I think, I don't know for sure, but that company may have had some issues in common with those barges in the past, but just something to, for us to think about moving forward.
Councilman, as an update, the contractor is working on the electrical repairs. There's about 100-foot-long cable that has to be replaced that apparently is damaged, and there's one last little piece that's coming in, we think, tomorrow. They should, that bridge should be fixed and ready to operate. Right now, as you know, it's in locked in the down position, so there's no maritime traffic. But they should be, should be up and operating normally by the weekend.
Good, good, thank you. I know with other councilmen, a few of them mentioned about grass cutting. Definitely grass cutting, ditches, drainage, I know I've seen it all for sure, and I'm sure maybe some of the other boards are, but, and this is not anything whatsoever taken from Public Works. They're absolutely understaffed, underpaid, 100% overworked. That's all us. Hopefully, we can do something, we can give them money, get some people hired, but I think, y'all mentioned, I think these contractors, contracting that awesome economy, so if we have something, whatever we need to do to look at, hopefully we have them get some help, because honestly, there's no way, they may be hauling some grass cut, but the rest of it, I'm sure we break their goal now. And yeah, I'm lucky, maybe it's in those gaps where we're going to pay, but I just think we can do some help where it's pay raise now, or get contractors maybe to issue, but whatever we can do to get them some help. And last week, congratulate Jason Davis. I guess he left. Oh, wait. You know, service to Biloxi, good luck in Moss Point, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I also wanted to touch on Jason Earl Davis and how sad I am, but he's done, left the building. Alright, we'll move on to public agenda. This is citizen comment section. We have 45 minutes allotted, three minutes each per person. Once you reach this desk, please state your name and address aloud for the record, as well as write it down on the piece of paper provided. My mic is definitely working. Anyone on my left, your right, that would like to speak? Nope? Anyone on my right? Okay, in the back. Come on down.
My name is Lloyd.
Yes.
Lloyd, here to take a short ride up to Spring. I'm here today for a community map amendment next month. Could you talk to the mic just a little bit? I'm sorry.
Go ahead and take a seat, babe. Go ahead and take a seat, and make sure you sign your name and address as well on that paper. And take your time, you've got three minutes.
Alright. So, I'm on the planning ordinance agenda today, the policy agenda, I guess you guys call it, and I just wanted you to know that I was here if you had any questions.
Okay.
The property in question is owned by Highway 15 Properties, which I'm a member of, and it's located on Reese Bergeron Road. So we're asking for community business zoning for that property, so.
Perfect.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else would like to speak? If not, citizen comments are now closed. This brings us to the policy agenda. Ms. Carey?
Orders to approve a zoning map amendment to authorize a change in zoning from residential estate to community business for Zero Reese Bergeron Road.
Previously moved by Mr. Glavine and seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion, Mr. Glavine?
Yeah, a couple of words. You know, this area, as we talked about it when it was moved for its first reading, does have, there's an alcohol rehab center, and this, this is just conducive to the area, this zoning. It doesn't encroach on anyone. There's been no opposition for this particular request, and I'm very familiar with Reese Bergeron, so I would ask that my colleagues approve this request.
Okay. Mr. Tisdale?
I have nothing to add to what Mr. Glavine said, thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to add a couple of questions. I know this was, Kerry, at the meeting you said it could be CB or NB, it could be either one of them. Why'd you make that statement like that?
Well, all I was doing was reminding the planning commission that they can either accept the zoning change as requested, or if they felt like that was too intense, they always have the right to move it down, just like I remind you all about that all the time. You can always ask for a zoning that's less intensive.
So this is just an empty piece of land?
Yes.
There's any plans or anything to do with it?
Not yet. He said in his narrative that he just wants to change the zoning for future development, and as Mr. Glavine pointed out, you've got CB on the west side, the north side, and the rehab center is already CB, and this is right next to the rehab center.
And there's a lot of wetlands toward the front end of Reese Bergeron when you turn in, towards the right, a lot of wetlands that you can't, I don't think you can develop it. It's going to probably stay wetlands forever.
Mm-hmm. The other thing was, I know that the meetings, they say that, they said they're just trying to sell the property. Do you have to change the zone? Is that legal enough, Peter, to change the zone and sell property?
I'd have to look at that specific question. It's kind of a case-by-case situation, but I don't think so.
It happens all the time, yeah. It, people, he, he's doing it for future development. He may have someone interested in buying it. We haven't had that conversation. No plan has been presented to us for any type of development on this property, but it does meet the criteria for a zoning change.
So I mean, we have to, supposed to be a mistake, we didn't mistake in the zone, was it? Tell him, I'm just trying to make sure we're doing everything properly to the LDO and state laws, and changing zones is a little bit different.
Yes, we are. Mistaking the original zoning is only one of the criteria you consider. The other one is changing the character of the neighborhood. Now, the city council has already voted to change Glenn Miller's 1,200 acres up there to CB, and then the council, the request for the rehab center came in, and that request was turned down by the council, but it was appealed to court, and the court overturned it and changed the zoning to CB. So you already have a change in the character there. One thing I would point out, there is one house right next door to this piece of property in question, but that house, I understand, is actually owned by one of the partners on this vacant piece of property, so they're in favor of it too. And it was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission 14 to 0 at the public hearing.
Well, my thing is just a zoning change, but you do that's a little bit different, so that's why I explained it. Can we change that just to sell the land? Is that-
Certainly.
-part of the state of Mississippi for us to do that?
Yes, sir. You can do that.
You know, because that's something we've been voting against, because it's either a mistake, or you need, whatever.
Well-
So I don't know if that was legal enough, was to vote for a change in the zoning.
Yes, sir. You can do that. Think about the other side of this. If you were changing the zoning for a specific type of development to go on there, in other words, if he came forward and you changed it for that, then essentially that's, would fall in the category of contract zoning, but we have people that ask for zoning changes all the time because they think it's more marketable. He may have someone interested in buying it. We haven't had that conversation. No plan has been presented to us for any type of development on this property, but it does meet the criteria for a zoning change.
So I mean, we have, uh, supposed to be a mistake. We didn't mistake in the zone, was it? Tell him, I'm just trying to make sure we're doing everything properly through the LDO and state laws. Changing zones is a little bit different.
Yes, sir. Uh, mistaking the original zoning is only one of the criteria you consider. The other one is changing the character of the neighborhood. Now, the city council has already voted to change Glenn Miller's 1,200 acres up there to CB. And then the council, uh, the request for the rehab center came in. And, uh, that request was turned down by the council, but it was appealed to court. And the court overturned it and changed the zoning to CB. So you already have a, a change in the character there. Uh, one thing I would point out, there is one house right next door to this piece of property in question. But that house, I understand, is actually owned by one of the partners on this vacant piece of property. So they're in favor of it too. And it was unanimously approved by the planning commission 14 to 0 at the public hearing.
Well, my thing is just a zoning change. When you do that, it's a little bit different. So that's why I asked you, can we change that just to sell the land? Is that part of the state of Mississippi for us to do that?
Yes, sir. You can do that.
You know, 'cause that's something we've been voting against because it's a mistake. All you need, whatever. So I don't know if that was legal enough was to vote for a change in the zoning.
Yes, sir. You, you can do that. Think about the other side of this. If you were changing the zoning for a specific type of development to go on there, in other words, if he came forward and you changed it for that, then essentially that's, would fall in the category of contract zoning. But we have people that ask for zoning changes all the time because they think it's more marketable at this other level, in this case CB. And if it's already surrounded by CB, then it just, it's an extension of a zoning that already exists.
Anyway, that's why I'm, so we're not breaking the law, then we can do this tonight.
No, sir. You're, you're well within the law. And I don't see anything in here that says we want to change the zoning so we can sell the property and make more money. It just says we want to change the zoning for the future development of the property, which is probably the main reason all zonings occur.
And, and the write-up from the thing, the man said, he said, I want to sell the property. Said it wasn't development, had no intention of development. So I'm just trying to make sure we got this straight, that we can actually do that. We're not breaking the law, that's all.
Yes, sir.
But I mean, never stated anything about developing anything. Man said he wanted to sell the property. Well, that's, I mean, he has a right to do that. But I don't know whether we should get involved in it. That's, that's my question to you.
Okay. We're straight now? All right.
I got just a follow-up. So, you know, first of all, when the original rehab center applied for a zoning change, and as Mr. Krill said, it was voted down by the council. It was recommended by the planning commission. And then it went to a judge, and the judge overturned it on appeal, saying this is legal and the rightful use, uh, you know, of this property. I believe the owners of the property, I don't know if they're, they're saying they want to sell it necessarily. I think they want to pursue developing it, which could also include a sale of the property, obviously. Um, but this, this property, it's kind of isolated, and it is conducive for, for CB zoning.
Yes, it is.
And, um, and like I mentioned earlier, there's a lot of the property adjacent to it that is uninhabitable, and you cannot develop. It's, it's purely swamp and wetlands. And, uh, so I hope my colleagues will, again, support this measure. It's, doesn't look like it has any opposition.
Kenny, Kenny, a question, you said you can't develop that property because it's wetland? Or you can develop?
No, the piece that's two, when, when you turn into the right, it's purely swampland. Not, not this piece that they want to rezone, but the adjacent piece. There's a big swath of swampland that, that's just, you can't develop it. It's swamp. You know, you can't go, unless you find a way to drain the swamp. And, um, but it's, it's, you know, you go in there, it's just one big bog of swampland.
So that's the property at the south end of Glenn Miller's property?
That's at the south end. This is on the north end.
That's right.
You know, and it's, it's, uh, you know, it's, it's a different elevation than the swampland.
So the piece of property we're talking about, they want to sell, but not swamps?
Right. It's not swamp.
So it's solid.
Correct.
Okay. Trying to make sure we hit that right, but put Pete on the hook for change. If we pay him $30 a week, you ought to be able to answer some of his questions, you know?
Good with that.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Unanimous vote. Brings us to resolution B.
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize construction of seven detached single-family units for 2740 Pass Road.
I'll make a motion for the purposes of discussion.
Okay. Question by Mr. Tisdale and seconded by Mr. Lawrence for discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Tisdale.
Yes, um, I would move that we table this for two weeks until our first night meeting in June. There are a number of residents that live in the area that wish to attend the meeting and speak. Most of them work during the day. Um, so I appreciate your support on this. But my motion, uh, when it's appropriate, would be to move that we table this resolution until June 4th council meeting.
Seconded by, okay. Seconded by Mr. Lawrence. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous vote. Brings us to resolution C.
Resolution granting minor subdivision final plan approval for 12409 Lorain Road.
Do you have a motion? Motion by Mr. Shoemaker.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion, Mr. Shoemaker?
No, I just, I think this is good for the community and good for Woolmarket, for Wolf's Falls.
Okay, Mr. Tisdale?
I have nothing to add.
All right. Anyone else? All in favor? Unanimous vote. This brings us to the consent agenda. Do you have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by Mr. Gaines. Seconded by Mr. Tisdale. All right, Mr. Lawrence.
My turn?
Your turn.
I like the way you spotlight that. Be happy. On A, they're talking about the, they've changed fund and said personnel change. So what, what, what would that mean when you're, you're only going to write that, isn't it? Why would they have a personnel change?
I think she retired, right?
I, I can't handle you. I don't know.
The persons who handle the petty cash in the various departments are assigned by name, and they have control of the petty cash. Every once in a while, one of them actually retires. And, or, or for other reasons, they have to change the personnel assigned to the petty cash.
Okay, I was just wondering, 'cause it seems like that happened several months ago. I was just wondering why it was like that behind, suddenly?
We don't, we don't change it until we need to. When, when, when somebody departs the scene, departs the, retires or goes away or changes jobs, you have to replace them.
All right.
Ms. Kekler retired.
All right, the next thing, Chief, Chief Miller, do we have any policemen left? I mean, you got five of them leaving right here.
Don't you feel safer, councilman? Don't you, don't you feel safer knowing we got five more policemen out there living in town with their guns?
I never felt unsafe.
We, we've had several folks reach, there were, there was retirement years and they're, they're retiring. And I think we'll probably see a few more, uh, before the years of.
Well, how many are replacing them? Say we lose another five. We're gonna have 10 people coming in?
Well, we're trying. Uh, you know, we're down, uh, probably 15 or 20 right now. Uh, and we're testing once a month now. And we've, uh, I think we've got about five that are set to, to come to work. But, you know, it'll be a, a good year before we'll have them trained well enough to really handle things.
Is that why you sent you sitting there? The $39,000 for tree removal? Why is the police department asking for that?
Well, it's on the impound lot up at the garage up in, up on Pops Ferry Road. And we've had a lot of trouble. It's not just one tree, it's a bunch of trees. We've had a lot of trouble with limbs breaking out of the trees and hitting impounded cars. So we're trying to get those trees out of the way before hurricane season. So we don't have to worry about that anymore.
All right, I was just wondering. I thought that was strange coming from you. $40,000 for tree removal, you know? And on, uh, the thing with, uh, S, Mike on the, approve the, the form of budget rental agreement for the use of the small crab, however?
Uh, we're tweaking the, uh, uh, lease agreements for the ramps to take care of a simple problem. The problem is, you'll, you'll know that we had a boat sink in the harbor recently. It changed hands. The, the owner of the boat sold the boat to somebody else. And that somebody else was supposed to move the boat and didn't move the boat, and eventually it sank. And that new person did never have a, and did never have a lease agreement. So we, Biloxi is stuck with the problem. So we, we changed the language to say that when you sell a boat, you, you're still responsible for that boat until such time as it's gone from the harbor.
All right. You're just making sure you add a little something.
Just trying to close the loop a little bit on that one.
All right. And I saw the thing with, uh, like Paul said, Danny McCall was a special event. That's the same thing that's been done. He just signed up for the special event contract. But it doesn't really change anything. You're dealing with the tournaments in there, right?
The special event, the, uh, corn flow, special event, that, that, it, it, he, as you know, the weather prevented the event from being held. So all we're doing is changing the date on that agreement.
Okay. And on this one, double AA, you were sending it, and you were sending BB. But in BB, you got, you re-rupt the contract. But the one AA was just over it. I didn't see anything coming to, come back on that one. Like BB, you couldn't, you got it written down there about leasing a water tower, different contract. But it got resolution and rescinding. AA?
AA is about the, uh, microchip for pets. So, and I think she, she just decided not to sign it. That was a pet microchip program that we, we passed the memorandum. And then the lady, for some reason, declined to sign it after we had approved it. So that's just, we're just taking that off the books to get, get rid of these sort of dead resolutions, just so we can have a record that we're canceling it. If she comes back, we'll reconsider it. Uh, BB is just a, um, is...
Well, CB will you come back and CC. Yeah, so you eliminate that would create a new one. I understand that.
Right. That's just cleaning up the, uh, water tower leases with C-Spar, or no, AT&amp;T at Morgan Sherry. They used to have that big sort of piece of machinery on top of the tower. And now we have a, a nice clean corral where everybody has their spot. So we're getting, we're canceling one of the older agreements and entering into a new agreement with them.
All right, thank you. And on the H-H, they had that special election. That's, uh, the Ward 4 election. It's $40,000?
That's what they cost.
Say again?
We've had, we've had some experience recently, so we know how much they cost. We just...
$40,000, is it right down the line?
Yeah, we just had an election, so they don't do it again.
I know. Just, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, more than two, this one.
Just checking. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Gaines?
I think George just about covered all mine.
Mr. Tisdale?
But not quite all of them. On, uh, item number M and Q and R are also related to this, um, warehouse at 321 Division that we just purchased. Are there any other improvements other than what's on this consent agenda, those three items? One was for a roll-up door. Let's see, the other was for electrical work. And then, uh, construction of a training classroom. Is this all that's gonna be done in there or?
That's not all that's planned. Uh, again, as we, uh, as we did the numbers, we were looking at about 2.25 million. That would include expanding the roof line to add about, uh, $100,000 for a base that would tie, uh, the extension. So in other words, you're doing some overhang, uh, roofing, uh, and as well as the, the concrete pad. I think Chief was talking about the roll, that was from your budget on that roll-up door, uh, that would split the, the buildings to access from, from the east, you know, through our property. The total budget at this point in time is like 2.25 million for the improvements.
But did you say the, the roll-up doors coming out of the chief's budget?
Right. He had, as well as the classroom training that we...
We, we had already appropriated money to make some improvements to the old building that we had. That was already in the budget. So we thought it would be wise just to transfer that money and use it on this building.
Makes sense. Thank, thank you very much, chief. On item O, excuse me, yeah. On item O, we're painting something at the Holloway Sports Complex. What do we paint?
All the overhang, the, everything that's rusting and, and, uh, the concession stands and, and areas will be scraped, sanded, and painted. In both, yes, baseball as well as softball. And eventually we'll come back with one at the tennis courts.
Who gets to pick out the color? Kidding, kidding, kidding. That'd be another argument. Last an hour. All right.
It's gonna be some flavor of red.
That's right. Yeah, I like that. On, uh, and, and again, on item OO, uh, which is the Cobia Tournament, do, do we know what tier level event that is? I, I don't believe it's gonna be a tier one or tier two. It's probably gonna be maybe a tier three, depending on how many folks it draws. I, I don't know if you have that information with you, chief. But, but this is, I mean, as we have events, it'd be helpful to know that ahead of time when our constituents have questions.
And I'll send that to the council. I'm not sure about the number, the draw that'll have. But I, I don't think it's, it may be a tier three, maybe.
Okay. Thank you. That's, that's, uh, all the questions I have. Thank you.
Mr. Glavine?
Yeah, I want to follow up with item O. Uh, this is in Ward 6. And are we getting any inter-local help from the county on the painting? Uh, 'cause previously, about a year ago, we were working with one of the supervisors on painting. And they, they had agreed, uh, to either provide labor if we provided the paint. Uh, is there any opportunity we could explore that and maybe, uh, reduce our cost? Or is this a done deal, Mayor?
This is something to tell we could finish before the girls softball tournament. We didn't wait. We pulled the trigger as fast as we could. It's not a very good price for price at three ways, I think, Jamie. Uh, and then figured out that, that if we pull the trigger, it'll be ready for the state, uh, softball, uh, tournament. And, uh, so we didn't want to wait on that. But there's some other opportunities like at, at the tennis court. So that's where we would take advantage.
Absolutely. And I just want to give this opportunity. I rode around with former councilman Barrett, who's now supervisor over this area. And we were looking for roads to pave in Ward 6. And we were having difficulty locating, uh, roads that needed paving. Most of them are in pretty good shape. And so then we switched gears to drainage issues. We've identified a couple of areas that, that he's trying to get, uh, a cost on. And I didn't think about something like this. So perhaps we can get him to look at the tennis courts or other areas, so he'll, he'll help us out. Thank you.
Mr. Shoemaker?
Let me add too. On tennis courts, schools coming with 40% up to 60,000 on the, on the lights. And, you know, possibly the paint too.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor of the consent agenda? Unanimous votes. Do we have any exceptions? No? All right. Moving on to code enforcement.
Item A on the agenda, Shane and Gail Elbaka, 1013020 Michael Street. That case has been resolved. Item B, Andy Day, 396 Shell Street. This property's still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Andy Day at, uh, 396 Shell Street? If not, this case is closed.
Item C, Brian S. Dial and Joseph E. Alexander, 414 Christie Lane. This property's still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Brian S. Dial and Joseph E. Alexander at 414 Christie Lane? If not, this case is closed.
Item D, Donna Jean Hansen, life estate, 8392 Bossusley Road. This property's still in violation.
I want to know what's wrong with it.
You can look at the pictures up here. You want to speak to the council?
Ma'am, please have a seat and calm down. Thank you.
Where them picnic tables are right there.
Please speak in the microphone.
Where them picnic tables are right there, and my hammock in that corner is scrap that we pick up at all the fishing ramps and boat ramps. And every two weeks, when Dustin comes and gets my, mows my grass, he picks that up. That truck is good. It has a tag on it. That's my hammock. I got another hammock going up, and those are my picnic tables where we sit. Dustin had not mowed my grass when this was taken, and it's mowed every two weeks. If you look on the other side of my property, it's Arguellos's junkyard. And he's worried about that antique truck that's got a tag on it when I'm looking at hundreds of junk cars that Arguellos has got stacked up.
So what exactly is the issue, Jerry? Picnic tables?
They're telling me I can't scrap shit that we pick up off the piers and the boat ramps.
I have some pictures that you can see a little closer than what's up here.
We pick beer cans up and recycle them. If we get a storm and it rains, yeah, beer cans get blown in my yard and soda cans. But we recycle those once a month. The city of Biloxi ain't gonna clear the piers and the boat ramps because they don't have enough staff. What do you want me to do, David? Then what do I do when I pick the shit up on the piers? Where can I put it? But I'm not gonna get rid of my truck. Look at Arguellos's.
Does the truck run?
Yes.
So is the truck a problem, Jerry, if it runs?
If it runs, and it's not wrecked or dismantled, it actually looks like it's okay.
Yeah.
It's got a tag on it. Did you look across the street at Arguellos's?
But then the problem is the trash and the, and litter, okay. All right.
What are you saying, the beer cans are littered?
So basically, she needs like a shed to put all of her scrap stuff in, and then you can, so, okay.
It's in the corner of the property. And let me ask you this question, who's gonna drive by and see it other than the mailman and the garbage man? Huh?
Understand, but...
Am I wrong?
Still, it's gotta be done, it's in the city, and it's against ordinances. But look, I'm telling you, I'll come out, we'll talk about it, but if some of the trash, maybe the cans, things like that, are gonna have to be picked up.
I don't mind picking them up, but I'd still sell them. It's not like I have to do it for money.
Right.
But we pick it up when we go fishing.
All right, you and David are gonna make an appointment.
I'll second it, David.
Okay, and we got a motion by David for 30 days, and a second by Mr. Guines. All in favor? Unanimous vote.
David knows nobody drives by my house.
Okay, moving on to E.
Item E, Randall J. James Jr., 161 Rosetti, that case has been resolved. Item F, Kevin Kirby, 1772 Curry Street, that case has been resolved. Item G, MAS Limited LLC, 2200 Beach Boulevard, that case has been resolved. Item H, Fu Hong Fam and Chong Din, 539 Jefferson Street, that case has been resolved. Item I, Lauren Simpson, 1109 DeSoto Street, we would ask for 90 days on that one, we are working with them, and they agree.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Guines for 90-day extension. All in favor? Unanimous vote.
Item J, Julie Smith, 361 Bowen Street, this property's in violation, and also K is Julie Smith, which is right next door, 363, both of those are still in violation.
Is anyone on behalf of Julie Smith here to speak? If not, this case is closed. Both cases are closed.
Item L, Steps Coalition Zero Holly, item N, Steps Coalition Zero Holly, and item N, Steps Coalition Two Seventy Four Holly Street, those cases have been resolved. Item O, Martha A. Walker, 362 Bowen Street, we would ask for 30 days on that one.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, and seconded by Mr. Guines for 30-day extension. All in favor? Unanimous vote.
Okay. Item P, Rebecca Oliver, 12324 Joe Hesley Road, this property's still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Rebecca Oliver?
I have, I have a question, Director. She appeared before us, obviously, before. Was anything at all done?
No, sir.
Nothing at all?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Case is closed. Do I have a motion on the routine agenda?
It's moved.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Lawrence. Go ahead, Mr. Lawrence. Go ahead.
Is Walt there? There he is, I knew he was hiding back there somewhere. Bring the checks up here, Walt.
I don't know where you're going.
Good afternoon, council. Let's see, we last received about $164,000 last week from MEMA, related to some forced account labor. We also have in this system $794,000, which is in step four or five as of today, so within the next 10 to 15 days, we should have that in our bank accounts. And with the items that are on the docket today, if council approves, and those will go to MEMA for reimbursement also, and that's about another half a million dollars.
All right, so we still keeping up with the money?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on the routine agenda? All in favor? Unanimous vote. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move it.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale, seconded by Mr. Guines. All in favor? Unanimous votes, meeting is adjourned. We'll go ahead and open our special... Motion by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Tisdale. All in favor? Unanimous vote.
Not recording, she's not recording it yet.
You're not recording it?
She's got to set it up. Thank you.